Dixon Unit School District 170, our regular meeting for April 16th, 2025. Roll call.
Mr. Fritz?
Here.
Mrs. Gates? Mrs. LeBlanc Parks?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Here.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Here.
Mrs. Wagner?
Here. I would ask the four newly elected board members to lead us in the line.
I'd like allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll need a motion to approve the consent agenda, which consists of our regular meeting minutes, Dixon Public School, an LCSCA treasures report and monthly bills, the balance sheet and monthly expense report, the discipline report, staff development report, monthly website and social media activity, and building reports. A motion, please.
So moved.
There is nothing new or unusual about this month's consent agenda, so my recommendation is to approve it as written.
Are there any questions or comments? Roll call.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Aye.
Mrs. LeBlanc Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Aye.
Mrs. Wagner?
Aye.
We have special presentations tonight.
So tonight, you will notice that we don't have any Dixon High students in so come on. In talking with Mr. Shainer, there are so many activities we had no one who could attend tonight, so we kind of did a little swap in talking with Mr. Magnifici. They needed to get all of theirs in because they will be choosing their student of the year, who will address their class at promotion. So we're going to see four tonight from Reagan Middle School, and then we will see double next month for the high school. So we're going to see all four videos first, and then we'll have Mr. Magnifici and any students that are here come on up.
Good evening. I'm Matt Magnifici, Principal at Reagan Middle School, and it is my honor to recognize our April and May Students of the Month. For April, we have Ireland Shaw and Colton Simpson, and for May, we have Riley Van Uston and Jacob Wen. Congratulations on all of your hard work and best of luck the rest of the way.
Hello, everybody. I am Ireland Shaw. I am in eighth grade, and I am Reagan Middle School Student of the Month. Some activities I participate in inside of school are volleyball, builders club, ICA, and then the president of student council. Outside of school, I do club volleyball for Nat Forest. My favorite teacher at RMS would 100% have to be Mrs. Lynn. She is just the most caring, loving person you will ever meet, and she's somebody I know I can lean on if I need help or support. My proudest moment at RMS would have to be winning the Illinois Principal Association Leadership Award. For the first few months at RMS, well, at the beginning of my eighth grade year, I felt like my hard work and like my dedication despite not only my schoolwork but to everything wasn't being recognized and wasn't like being looked at by not only my teachers but by everybody. And Mr. Baker told, pulled me in and told me that I won this award. I had finally felt like people were recognizing and noticing my hard work. If there was one rule I would change, would be the new 30-minute extension to our day. Like I said, going from 2:15 to go to 2:45. Me personally, I just feel like there's no need for it. I mean, you can't really add a new class period in 30 minutes. So you have to divide it into our eight periods, and that only gives you three, not even four minutes per class. And I know for Reagan, I don't know about the high school, but I know for Reagan, we only spent, we spent over, well, just about an hour in all of our educational classes, which is social studies, science, ELLA, and math. And I feel like adding four minutes to those isn't really helpful, but, you know, I can't change it. And some advice I would give a sixth grader, there's two pieces of advice I would give. First one is do not care what other people think. I cannot stress this enough, not only to myself but to all my friends. In 10 years from now, it's not going to matter what shoes you wear, what your hair looks like, what earrings, your shoes, your shirt, it doesn't, nothing, none of this, your look, appearance, is going to matter in 10 years. But all that's going to matter is that you were a good person and you made people smile and you just, you were just a good person. And then the second piece of advice I would give is grades do not define you. I know I struggle with this one, especially since in middle school, your grades are definitely more, I don't know, thrown onto you. They're definitely more important now, because when you start to look at your grades more and notice them more. And I feel like just that little letter doesn't explain who you are as a person. It doesn't say like, just because you might flunk a science test, doesn't mean you're a bad person and you're a failure, it just means you were struggling. So there's no reason to let A, B, C, D, E, or F, whatever letters or there are, as grades, those don't define you as a person, no matter what. But all that matters is that you are a good person and you spread joy in this world. That is it. I'm Ireland Shaw. Bye.
Hello. My name is Colton Simpson, and I'm in the eighth grade. My activities outside of school are baseball, football, and bowling. My favorite teacher would either be Mrs. Kitzman or Mrs. Thornton. It would be one of those two. Then, if I could change one rule, it would be bathroom passes. I hate, I don't like bathroom passes, and usually right when the quarter starts, I like, I use them all. Then, my proudest moment would probably be, uh, when I got to state bowling as a first year. Then, a new club that I would make would probably be like a sports club. So like, that club out of like a month could like go like get like an hour and like go do other sports, like football, baseball, or just go outside and have fun. Then, advice I would give as a sixth grader. RMS is not a big school. It's not. Think it is, but it's not. Sixth grade was easy, I just had to get in the flow of the school and stuff. But seventh grade, I had a little like difficulty because seventh grade, it was hard. But when I got into eighth grade, it was pretty easy. We just did everything was seventh grade, and it carried over to eighth grade. So the school's not that big, sixth grade's okay, seventh grade's a little bit more difficult, but you really need to pay attention in the seventh grade to be do, do good in eighth grade.
Hi, my name is Riley Van Uston, and I'm in eighth grade. The activities I do in and out of school are, in the summer, I do softball, and then I do shot put and disc through track. Uh, choosing my favorite teacher so hard. I loved all of my teachers this year. I think I put on a really good team. I actually really enjoyed teaming this year. At the beginning, I wasn't too much of a fan with it because I wasn't with the people I'd been hanging out with that summer, but I loved it. I talked to people I didn't think I would ever talk to, which, and like made new friends. And so I really benefited for it or from it, I think, because you're the same group of kids constantly, and like in your homeroom, you all were taught the same way and given, given the same notes, and I just think it was a really good idea, especially if like that person, if that teacher's homeroom is, is like crazy because people are always going to them, it's super easy just to get help or copy notes from somebody else. So I really enjoy teaming. I couldn't pick my favorite teacher. If I could change a rule, it'd be the bathroom passes, hate them so much, and actually despise the bathroom passes. I don't know how I would change it, but I don't know. Like, I got my bathroom pass stolen this year, and a girl's got to go when a girl's got to go. Like, I don't, I can't help that it got stolen from me. My name was on it and everything, but obviously someone's going to scribble that out, so I don't know what I would do to change it. I would just, I just hate them. Um, like, don't get me wrong, I understand why it's there. It's to keep people from wandering. Like, I know I wander sometimes, but it, I just find it so annoying. If I could make a club, it would definitely be a club that travels more. I think I, well, one, who doesn't love traveling with their friends, traveling in general to see new places, and then like you're learning different things in different cultures or different historic events? Wow, doing all three? Hello? Who wouldn't want to do that? I know, I'd love to do it, and I love learning about history. History is one of my favorite classes because it's so cool just to see how much we've changed and how crazy the world has been. And so I know if I had the option to travel with my friends, just like similar to the DC trip, obviously like closer, I think I'd love it. My proudest moment, one, not failing math, and two, getting student of the month. I have not been, I'm not known for being the hottest at math, obviously from last year, but I seriously think having Ms. Longen this year has helped me so much. Like, I don't think I've ever understood math more. Like, it's still hard sometimes, don't get me wrong, because I'm not too good at math, but having Ms. Longen, the way she explains it is just so much easier. Like, I don't know why, but I hadn't failed math once this year, definitely got close, but haven't failed it, and that's a win in my book. And also, um, getting student of the month, because hello, it's student of the month. My advice for a sixth grader, don't make someone else's life harder just to benefit yours. You don't know what someone's going through, nor is it your business, so don't cry, but just be respectful of each other. Pick up your mess, so, and without the mindset that the janitor's going to do it, and say hello to your teachers, talk to people you don't, like, it's not hard.
Hi, my name is Jacob Wen, and I'm in eighth grade. I'm the May Student of the Month. I first want to thank everyone for allowing me to follow in the footsteps of my sisters. During school, I participate in cross-country, track and field, art drone soccer, and builders club. Outside of school, I run with Dixon Distance Club and hang out with my friends. My favorite teacher is Ms. Kent because she'll always help you with any questions you have. She'll also encourage me a lot throughout my school years. The one rule I would change is the bathroom pass rule, because sometimes a kid really needs to go, but it's the end of the quarter and they have no passes left. My proudest moment is when the boys' cross-country team got third in the ISA State Cross-Country Meet earlier this year. The new club I would make is a pickleball club, because some kids really love it when we play it in PE, so why not make a club for it? Some advice for incoming sixth graders is just to take it all in and enjoy it, because it'll be over before you know it.
Hey, guys, ready?
I, I know, they're so shy, too.
Sorry, guys, I didn't mean to yell in my video, I'm being honest.
I told her sometimes it's hard hearing these videos, so keep her out.
I was really hyped for it, too.
So which one of you said that about teaming?
I liked the teaming.
Okay, you did.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't think we've heard the, any responses from students about teaming. We've heard it from the principal, we've heard it from the teachers, but you gave us a nice perspective on that, and, um, we thought about television.
Television? Honestly, yeah.
Were you talking to anybody?
No.
You were just talking to the camera.
Actually, nobody was home, so I was, I was a bit sad. I could talk as long as I want.
Yeah, I think you should consider.
It was whole, no interruptions, like, you can hear the dogs in the back, but no interruptions besides that.
Very good. And where do the rest of you get your wisdom? You're only in eighth grade, right?
So mature.
Yes, yes, really.
Mr. Magnifici, it sounds like the bathroom passes.
I think, I think almost everyone has mentioned it.
He's had tea for nine weeks, and nurse, and nurse.
I want to tell, most of us never had bathroom passes during grade school.
And so, yeah, what do you do at the end of the quarter?
Hold it.
So I think you need to come up with a solution instead of Mr. Magnifici can kind of brainstorm. And who's the runner? Who had a Reagan shirt on? It's Jacob.
He's actually, he has, uh, he's stepped out away from his track meet, so he has a distance event here in a few minutes.
Thank you.
Lucky it's a home meet.
Yeah, good luck to you.
Colton was just at the state bowling meet, uh, over last Friday and Saturday, so these kids are very busy and involved, and a lot of fun to have at school.
And you still have time to do your grades and stuff like that, huh? Do you think it helps you to be busy, or?
I don't know. Sometimes I have homework, just can't really get it done. Same for school.
Make choices, huh?
Right.
Anybody else?
I'm super, you're, you're all unique, and that's just so good.
Yeah, I thought we were listening to high school.
I know.
I was impressed.
Can't wait to see what they'll do. I know. Excited for you to move on to high school, that'll be great.
Great place to go.
Thank you.
We have Mrs. Fork for DEA Teachers of Month.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Goodbye.
Thank you.
Hello, hello. Happy April. The DEA had 33 individuals nominated for Teacher of the Month this month, and then one group. So we had from Washington, Stacy McCullough, Sarah Schmidt, Carmen Heim, Maria Peterson, Clara Haas, Carrie Ramirez, and then from Jefferson, we had Jen Keel, Suzanne Weaver, Candace Bykema, Kelsey Stone, the entire third grade team, Keely Dewey, Paige, uh, Peter, Claire, Lauren Merrill, Madison, Melissa Guthrie, and myself. From Madison, or I'm from Reagan, Kelly Ruhl, Greer Collins, Rachel Assage, Ally Goldie, Jen Page, Jenny Gasso, Candy Lynn, Lynn Longan, Rainie Metzler, Amber Whitcomb, Eric Ferguson, Amanda Sawyer, Bridget Becker, Nate Jeeves, Tyler Madsen, Julia Thornton, Chris Hansen, and from the high school, Kim Munson. And our winner for the gift card was Amber Whitcomb. And the one thing I want to say is, when these were sent out to me today, the DEA rep that sent them said she really noticed a common theme in all of these, and it was all about teachers going above and beyond and helping and supporting each other and sharing ideas. And she said it hasn't always been that way, so she was just really encouraged to see like all the teachers working together and sharing ideas, so I thought I would share that.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
Was there anybody on Citizens Agenda? In correspondence, I have a note from Diane Frye. Board of Education and Administration, thank you for the beautiful lantern in memory of my mom. It will be cherished forever. Diane, and from the family of Ida Johnson. Do you have anything else, Marvill?
I do not.
I need a motion that the board approve the Vision 2030 resolution. That I will read, that I have to read. The motion first?
Motion first, then I'll just give a little bit, and then I'll let you read it.
Okay. Motion and second?
So moved.
If you remember last month, I had a small PowerPoint presentation from looking at all of the state associations from IASB to IASA. They encouraged administration and then ultimately Boards of Education to adopt the Vision 2030. And when, as I explained last month, when I looked at it and really being learning-focused and learning forward, shared accountability, and predictable funding, these are messages that we can pass along to not only the state associations, but our legislators, and all the way up to our governor, to understand the things that need to be done in order for the focus and the growth in education. So what Linda's going to read to you is actually the resolution that any school, any school district who has adopted it, and if you go to, I'll put the, the link in an upcoming newsletter after the meeting here, I will actually go in, if the board approves it, click on Dixon and make sure we're on there. And I was just, I had the opportunity to discuss, we had Representative Fritz, had all of the, the superintendents from our area out, and these are things that they look at, and they hear from us, and they want to know how things are working. So it isn't just falling on a deaf ear. They are, are listening to us, asking us, and they as well know what we're focusing on, so. And the resolution was, was drafted, this is the one, every school district who signs on across the state signs the same resolution.
And this is a, for some perspective, there was a 2020 resolution, too, wasn't it?
Correct.
From these same groups?
Yes, and we did adopt it 10 years ago, or five years ago, as well.
And it, it did make some difference in some of the iss-
Correct.
Excuse me, issues that were going on at the time. Whereas Illinois Vision 2030, whereas public education plays a defining role in ensuring equal opportunity for children in Illinois and throughout the United States, and whereas it is our collective duty to ensure that every student, regardless of demographic or geographic identity, has equal access to a quality public education, and whereas we believe that strides need to be proactively made to face challenges and continually improve our public education system, and whereas there have been three areas of prioritization identified as integral in improving our public education system, future-focused learning, shared accountability, and predictable funding, and whereas future-focused learning should address promoting future-driven skills that allow for more college and career exploration, enhancing student safety and well-being, attracting and retaining a high-quality and diverse educator pipeline, promoting curriculum and instructional flexibility to meet the unique needs of local communities, and whereas predictable funding should address protecting the integrity and funding of the evidence-based funding formula, strengthening public education through pension reforms, and establishing equitable funding sources for capital and safety needs, and whereas it is imperative that any education improvement proposal for comprehensive change must be developed and supported by not only the education community, but in collaboration with families, communities, businesses, and others whose priorities reflect the best interests of the students. Now therefore be it resolved that Dixon Public Schools 170 Board of Education joins with the Illinois Association of School Administrators, Illinois Association of School Boards, Illinois Principals Association, Illinois Association of School Business Officials, Illinois Association of Regional Superintendents of Schools, Superintendent's Commission for the Study of Demographics and Diversity, Illinois Alliance of Special Ed Administration, and the Illinois, and the Association of Illinois Rural and Small Schools, in supporting the Vision 2030 Education Improvement Policy. And be it further resolved that the Dixon Public Schools 170 Board of Education urges the Illinois General Assembly to approve the necessary legislative changes to implement the recommendations under the three pillars of education improvement as contained in the Vision 2030 policy. If voted on, this will be approved the 16th day of April 2025. Questions? Roll call.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Aye.
Mrs. LeBlanc Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Aye.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Wagner?
Aye.
I need a motion that the board approve the baseball and softball fields agreement with the Dixon Park District as presented in our pack.
So moved. Second.
As you know, we are lucky to have our partnership with the Dixon Park District. We utilize them for our softball fields, our baseball fields, during tennis season, our tennis courts, and so we have been working to finalize our agreement with them, even though we're at the beginning to middle of our season. There are a couple of things that the district has now taken over, especially in the area of softball. We are now required to purchase the painting for the fields, make sure we have someone paint the fields before the games, some of the gathering of garbage, making sure certain things are open. So we needed to update our agreement, which is, it is in there, and we, um, we need to get another one signed also, so we don't have to maybe come back every year. They have built in a year to increase for the use of Reynolds Fields, the baseball fields, Al Morrison, tennis courts, and that, so this one is specifically for baseball and softball, and my recommendation is that we approve this. This will go through technically next year, but like I said, we know what to expect financially and how to direct Mr. Campbell financially for the next years to come.
Any questions?
Roll call. Mrs. LeBlanc Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Aye.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Aye.
Mrs. Wagner?
Aye. We need a motion that the board approve the bid for ceiling tile and grid at Dempsey Therapeutic School as presented.
So moved. Second.
Earlier in the year, we asked you to take action on three different bids, one for painting the gym, one for the ceiling tiles, and one for the replacement of the gym floor. You approved the painting at that time, which has been completed. However, you tabled the ceiling tiles and grid along with the gym floor, basically awaiting for funding to be available within the grant. That funding is now available, those grants have been, the grant has been fully submitted and approved. So tonight, we're asking you to take action on those two bids.
Roll call. Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Aye.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Aye.
Mrs. LeBlanc Parks?
Aye.
Mrs. Wagner?
Aye. We need a motion that the board approve the bid for the gym floor at Dempsey Therapeutic Day School as presented.
So moved. Second.
Same.
Ditto.
Roll call.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Aye.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Aye.
Mrs. LeBlanc Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mrs. Wagner?
Aye. We need a motion that the board approve the food service management contract as presented.
So moved.
Second.
So each year, as part of our food service contract, we have to actually approve the rate, um, average we will pay. If you remember last month, I mentioned to you that we were waiting for the menu pricing for what is referred to as the lunch equity calculator. We do not have that yet, so next month, we're going to be bringing you menu pricing. In the meantime, what we are asking you to do today is approve the contract for the increase for Whittsons. This is a yearly process that's actually controlled by ISBE. They control the increase via CPI, and that increase this year is 3.6%. We're asking that you approve that.
Any questions? Roll call.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Aye.
Mrs. LeBlanc Parks? Aye. Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Aye.
Mrs. Wagner?
Aye. We need a motion that the board approve the implementation of a high deductible healthcare plan with health savings account as presented.
So moved.
Second.
So over the past few years, we've been discussing the implementation possibly of a high deductible savings insurance plan for employees. Last month, at our insurance committee meeting, we had kind of final approval, let's just say, by the insurance committee to move forward with the recommendation that the board implement the plan. This still requires a number of steps. The first step we're asking you guys to do tonight is to approve the implementation of that. And then what we'll be doing from here is negotiating with the unions, employee contribution amounts, incentive amounts for HSAs, and a variety of other types of contingency parts. The plan is kind of described for you on the attached pages. It is a quality plan that meets all the legal requirements. In addition to that, this is not the elimination of the PPO plan. This is in conjunction with, as an overall opportunity towards cost savings for the district in the future. This is in conjunction with, as an overall opportunity towards cost savings for the district in the future.
That's what I was going to reiterate. It's another option.
Will be another.
For our people. Any other questions or comments?
So the insurance committee, you kind of had several options of, like, was this out for bids or something or?
Uh, no, so we work with the COOP. So remember, we're part of the insurance, the Illinois School Insurance Network, formerly known as Lincoln Way. So Marsh McLennan is the agent for the program, okay? And they presented to us a variety of different high deductible plans. The plan that you have in front of you today is, that's described there. Actually, on one of these pages is kind of a group of those plans. This little graph here is three different plans that they kind of presented. The plan that we're bringing to you today for the approval is best suited for what it is we're trying to do. It offers savings, but yet offers quality within the health insurance as well. The process for health insurance changes is defined within the contracts. So the first step in changes to the healthcare, healthcare providers is it goes through the insurance committee, who then makes a recommendation. So this is the next step in that process, the recommendation to the board.
Okay, so the insurance committee reviewed these three different options and they selected the one that we're about to vote on. And Brandon, you stood on that committee?
Correct.
What was that process like?
Yeah, I mean, like Mark was saying, you know, she mentioned all the options and the benefits of going this route, being high deductible and obviously with the FSA option for ones to use that as a, call it fail-saved against a high deductible plan, but to build those options available, so. So, yeah. It was a longer meeting than usual.
And again, I would just reiterate, we've been talking about these plans for years. This is not new. Linda has sat on that committee for a number of years and we've been talking about it for the last three, four years now. So we've, there's a level of due diligence that has taken place and we've worked at it quite a bit. This is kind of where we're at now.
We'll cut costs and also give some members a better option.
So, and these plans are offered to staff? And is there staff also that sits on the insurance committee as well to?
Yeah, it's full representation from all the bargaining units, non-certified, non-unions administration, as well as Lee County especially. Which is also defined in. Thanks.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Mrs. Shaver?
Aye.
Mrs. LeBlanc Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Wattsburg?
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Wagner?
Aye.
We need a motion that the board approve the purchase and construction of playground equipment at Dempsey Therapeutic School as presented.
So moved.
Second.
So part of the overall process as it related to the funding within the IDEA grant and the approval of that grant, we've always had it in the back of our minds to have, use those grant funds to install a playground out there. Right now, there isn't one for all intents and purposes. In conjunction with Janine Upman, the principal, Sherri Ettinger, and Kevin Schultz, they've worked with, they've worked with the provider to create a equitable playground similar to ones that we have at the other schools. Probably the one big difference that this one has is it has the padded rubber, rubber bottom. Whereas all of our other playgrounds have the mulch, which we have to replace and is just not great. And ultimately, over time, it is our goal to change all of the playgrounds to this rubber, rubber mat, rubber padding that we put under them now. And ultimately, again, the grant has been written, the grant has been approved, the funding has been approved for this program. This is purchased through Omnia Services, which is a purchasing contract cooperative within the state. So we don't have to bid it because they've already won the bid. They've won the bid at the state level and offer the best pricing for this equipment. Any questions?
So are we obligated to use Omnia in any kind of a playground equipment purchase or?
We're not obligated, but because of their state contract, their equipment is going to be the cheapest. They're going to have the best options for us. Also, remember with a playground like this, like, this isn't the kind of thing that you can, like, we can't go to Menards and buy what they have. We can't install this. This has to be professionally installed and then inspected on a regular basis. The installers have to be professional installers. You can't just hire a random contractor to come in and install these. This is all prescribed through the entire process.
Like, this is the first time I've heard of using this Omnia or maybe I just didn't notice it, but do we use this?
Um, we used it, and Kevin, you have to remind me, we used it last year on a project. I can't remember what it was.
Right off the top of my head, I can't remember.
We've been, we've been members of Omnia for years. And they have state contracts for a number of things. For example, the HVAC units that we bought out at Machusah were part of the Omnia purchase plan. So again, you can buy these train HVAC units through Omnia purchasing cheaper than you can get them on the market. And you don't have to bid them because they've already won the state bid. You can't get them cheaper anywhere else.
And we've used it for equipment as well for like lawn mowers and tractors in the past. There's a multitude of things that this cooperative agreement does the, goes out, does all the bidding, and then they award the bids to different companies. And it's all done through this partnership act. And we belong to it, like, say, Mark said, for a better part of a decade or possibly even more than that.
Other questions?
I just would like to give a shout out to, to the staff at Dempsey. I'm excited, this is kind of the final culmination and all the pieces are brought together. When you, if you went through this fall, our open houses and got to see it, these were kind of the final things, making sure we had the grant funds to do it. And now we have, and the staff, these kids have not wanted for anything to do at recess or when they have time outside and that, because the staff has ensured that anything and everything was open to them. But I am just tickled and can't wait to see their first day with their new playground.
Roll call.
Mrs. LeBlanc Parks? Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Wattsburg?
Aye.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Shaver?
Aye.
Mrs. Wagner?
Aye.
We need a motion that the board approve the termination of all agreements with Econergy as presented.
So moved.
Second.
So last month, we had a pretty lengthy discussion about our solar contracts with Econergy. As a general timeline, we started this conversation with Econergy dating back to May of 2022. We had our first options approved here at the board level in December '22. We had the board approve PPA agreements, power purchase agreements for solar in May of 2023. And while there's been a variety of different things happened between that time and now, there's a few very simple things right now that, where we are at. We have no construction timeline. Two years after signing PPA agreements, we have no construction timeline. We have no schematic drawings. We have no permits. We have no interconnection with ComEd documentation of any way, shape, or form. In addition to that, they have pushed construction back to June of 2026. A big reason for that is they are waiting for secondary approval of the microgrid grant, where we qualify for electric buses and solar charging stations and this battery generator, of which the bid package has now been approved. As you've seen recently in the news, a lot of that federal funding has been pulled back as of the start of the month. And there is at this time, no guarantee that that is going to be funded. As a result, we have taken the time to go through these agreements and verify it. As you can see there, under the bullet point 1. C, which gives us an option out of these agreements. And ultimately, right here today, that is the recommendation that we are making to you. You originally did approve these, so we are asking that you also terminate them as we move forward. Again, I'm happy to answer any questions.
So Mark, this is two different agreements, right? There's the one, there's the panels on the roofs project and there's the bus project. Am I thinking about that right?
So, no, not really.
Okay.
Because they all go through the power purchase agreements and there is a power purchase agreement for each individual site. So in order for the microgrid electric bus charging to work, you have to also have a PPA working solar grid.
Okay.
So when you think about Reagan, Reagan Madison, where we were going to do that, you will have to also have the PPA. So there's a PPA for here too as well. I mean, there's one for every site.
Right, so there's two separate, there's a bunch of PPAs, one for each site, and then there's the bus add-on. We certainly couldn't cancel the PPAs but keep the bus, because like you said, it'd be that way. That makes sense. But I'm remembering this as two different things we kind of did at two different times.
Yes.
And we're wiping all of them. Okay.
Mark, what's the advantage to us to cancel these contracts?
So until we cancel them or until they get acted upon, which again, we have no evidence that tells us they're going to get acted on, we have, we can't go forward with anything else. So for example.
Or it's another contract?
Well, there's a lot of other options. So like, we could just, we could sign new PPA agreements with another organization. We could recently Rockford enter into a lease, a land lease with a solar company. They're being paid for their land and they're getting an energy kickback to the grid based on the energy that is being produced. We could do something like that. Recently, in the last couple of years, this wasn't available to us originally, but in the last couple of years, basically the federal government has opened up a funding mechanism similar to like tax rebates, where we don't pay taxes. But one of the reasons why government institutions could never do these was because the return on investment was too high. Well, basically, the federal government has opened up the rebates now to us. So our return on investment, we could actually buy our own now, where two or three years ago, it wasn't possible to do that. The return on investment was too high. It was too long for us to do it. We could actually do that now. In addition to that, there are, you've heard of community solar agreements. We could just simply sign on with a community solar agreement and we would ultimately be getting a $25,000 to $30,000 rebate back on a yearly basis, based on the contract that we negotiate with them, without actually installing any solar. It would be some solar array somewhere else. So until we act or until we get this, we lose the options of these other issues. One of the biggest reasons why we signed on to this program a couple of years ago was to insulate ourselves from rising energy costs. Well, we were told six months ago, or probably even longer than that, that the ComEd delivery charges, so we get two different charges. There's the energy that we buy, but then there's the delivery of that energy that you pay ComEd to. ComEd is increasing those delivery distribution charges by well over 20% here in the next couple of months. So we are going to instant, we've been trying to insulate ourselves from that, but because they're not getting anything done, we are now at risk of having these higher energy costs. We can't really do anything about it until.
Can we?
Until we do something, you know? And so, I mean, again, at this point, we've been waiting two years. We have no evidence that makes us believe this is going to happen anytime soon.
Thank you. Have you, any contact or response from Econergy?
Yeah, so I'm on a bimonthly call with them, where they discuss the grant and so forth. It's a lot of, well, we'll just keep pushing it back, keep pushing it back. We've had emails with them where, I mean, I pushed them pretty hard at the end of last summer to say, hey, what's going on? And they gave us this two-week timeline. You're going to have schematics, you're going to have this, you're going to have that. Two weeks later, we didn't have it. I contacted them again. He's like, let me check into it. 12 days later, haven't heard from you. You know, every now and then he'll contact me, hey, we're kind of doing this. I think at this point, my explanation of all of those items would be, even if he said he was going to install it tomorrow, would we want him to based on our experience? Keeping in mind, these solar agreements are 25 years.
So you're saying because we, until we terminate this contract, we can't enter into any others?
That's, that's correct.
So I think the board is still in favor of saving energy costs and also looking into solar and electric vehicles. But, but it's disappointing, but I understand why. I think we need to move on to another company or something.
Do you have any specific plans or for next steps?
Well, I, you know, again, I will put the cart before the horse. We have relationships with another company that actually offers our, they do our gas contract. So we have a contract for the purchase of natural gas. And they do electricity, they do solar, they do everything as well. We have a relationship with them. We know them. We met with him two days ago. We talk to him on a regular basis. I will see him in three weeks or two weeks at IASBO. But that doesn't mean we're going to necessarily go with him. We need to, we need to make sure that whatever our decision is, is right for us. These are long-term agreements. Obviously, this one ended up being a flop and full disclosure, I was the one who pushed for it. I mean, I can, I can stand up and admit that, I'm not hiding behind that. But I'm also trying to, now at this point, I recognize that we need to rectify that situation and we need to figure something else out. I can't guarantee you that this microgrid grant won't get funded. You could be walking away from it. I can't guarantee it.
But there are other companies, recently a former student who works with companies who does this and was looking at the microgrids for electric buses and that, came in, you know, introduced himself, connected, we all got connected with Mark and Kevin. It was a short-term thing and we couldn't act on it to even see if it was something that we wanted and what it would do in the future for electric buses. Again, because we had this. So there are things popping up, I think, like you said, both federal and statewide that now we can at least indulge in the conversation to find out what it is.
And we have a performance contractor that we've worked with in the past when we did the big renovation here in the district, the decade over last decade. They, you know, they've approached us too on this concept of, look, your return on investment isn't as high as it once was. And they do full, they do full design, full implementation, all the paperwork and everything, but yet we would own it. Now, I'm not implying that we can afford it. I don't know if we can, but there's a, there's a concept out there of, you know, what is our return on investment? If we invest a million dollars and we can have that back in three years, we then get 23 years of energy savings out of whatever that million-dollar investment might have been. Again, but we can't explore these options until we figure out what we've got going on.
And what we have done so far is we've already paid to study the roof at Reagan.
We've done a roof analysis of every one of our schools.
Okay.
And that was not paid to Econergy. That was paid to our architect.
Okay, so that could be used in the future?
That data is ours, we own it.
Okay, great, okay. And that's pretty much the only?
That's all we've done.
Capital we've expended, right?
Did we do research on the microgrid? Because I know we had, the question was, do we put it out here for electric buses? Do we put it over at Reagan? Did they do that infrastructure study as well?
So they, they have done some of that infrastructure. When I say they, I mean Econergy, not Bray.
Okay.
Bray has not done that work. But again, Econergy, if they have done that work, we've seen no evidence of it. We've seen no schematics, we've seen no drawings, we've seen nothing that tells us it's truly moving forward. We've seen no schematics, we've seen no drawings, we've seen nothing that, that tells us it's truly moving forward.
Thank you, Mark. Anybody else comments? Go call.
Sorry, the last thing is, I really like that, Mark, you're willing to change directions. When you see something, you put your voice behind something, and you want to change directions later. And I, I got a lot of respect for, let's go with what's, what makes sense now, so, thanks. We all voted for it too.
I've already convinced you. I've got a pretty will, Mark, you can't force me to vote that way.
Thank you. Go call.
Mr. Andrews?
Aye.
Mr. Rosberg?
Aye.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Shaffer?
Aye.
Mrs. LeBlanc-Parks?
Aye.
Mrs. Wagner?
Aye.
We move on to administrative reports. First up, turn it over to Mark again.
So just a couple of things. First of all, earlier yesterday, we received a notice from our insurance company, ISDA. They are actually offering our board a spot on their Board of Regents. Margot and I will send you out specific information in case if you are interested in serving on this board. It is a fairly sizable commitment as far as driving to Springfield, and they do a big board meeting at Triple I and things like that. I have pushed them pretty hard on rising costs of insurance, and that is why they are offering us a voice, let's just say. Because I've, I've done that. Unfortunately, they won't offer it to me. Mainly just because the ISDA has a certain number of Board of Education members and a certain number of administrators on it. And the spot that is open is a Board of Education member. So remember, this comes through IASB. This is the insurance program that they support and provide, so. We'll send you that information if you're interested. We'll get you more information and kind of, kind of help you determine that. At your locations tonight, you had a small write-up. Basically says RFP, or Request for Proposals, on Copier Services. Jim Manley and I, for the last month or so, have been conducting an RFP. We're not quite done, but we wanted to just give you some type of information, because this will kind of come at us pretty quick here over the next month or so. Basically, we had, the reason we're doing it is because our five-year contract is currently coming up due at the end of June. We had four different vendors. I'm going to keep those vendors confidential at this time. I don't want anybody to imply that we're speaking at one of them or for, in favor of one of them. They all submitted very competitive bids though. We were really pleased with the response that we got. And we're looking closely at a couple of them, doing reference checks, evaluating their cost, and taking a look at what they're, you know, did they meet the specifications of the proposal? So basically, that's kind of where we're at. The next steps, once we actually do kind of finalize which vendor we'd like to go with, we'll be negotiating a contract with them, and then of course, bringing that contract to you to approve. We do expect that to be in May, which is why I didn't want to surprise you with that in May. But there will be a fast turnaround at the end of June, whether it is our incumbent copier company, or whether it is a new one, as of June 30th, machines got to go in and out, regardless of the person that we select, or the vendor that we select. So it will be coming on pretty fast. So I just wanted to give you kind of a heads up. Next, a couple of months ago, this is not in your business report, we began some discussions about transportation. And we've had some good news. We don't get to say that very often, but we do.
State funding?
What's that?
State funding?
No.
Not that good.
Not that good. However, I will give a lot of credit to Illinois Central. Illinois Central listened. They listened to our concerns, they listened to what we needed. They want to maintain our relationship, they want to maintain the contract, and they have approached us with a six-year extension with a $700,000 yearly savings. So at this point, I find it hard to believe we would get anything better somewhere else. They made sacrifices within that contract. I will give them that, I'll say it straight on up. There are things in that contract that they're giving up, and so it looks very, very promising. They have not given me, they gave me a proposal document outlining all the specifics. They are now going to provide for us a contract extension and addendum with pricing changes and so forth. And then, once we kind of iron out all those details, we will bring that to you for approval. Probably May, but maybe June, we'll see.
Six-year extension?
Yeah, so there was a years.
What's that? That's a lot of years.
Yeah, so, yeah, they want to service the contract here for a long time.
And, I mean, it's a dumb question, and it's still profitable for them? Like, it's a $700,000 savings as well, it sounds like a lot of, I mean-
So-
Right, do we, who are, who are partners who's going to stay in business?
First of all, yeah. First of all, $700,000, keep a couple of things in mind when it comes to that. We are sacrificing some routes, just so you know. They made a significant sacrifice. They originally quoted us an 11% increase in the first year. They took that down to four. And so when you compound that out over the years, you're talking about a lot of money for a, when you're talking about a $2 million a year, $2.5 million a year contract. One of the other big sacrifices they made is unfortunately, our contract has an allowance where we have to pay for unused routes. And we only pay a portion, we pay a percentage, we don't pay the full amount, but they've scratched that. So like, that's a big number for them, you know? They were getting, and keep in mind, we had shrunk the routes ourselves. Declining enrollment, combining routes, we had worked with them to do that, but we had shrunk down our routes by about six regular routes around the district. They were getting paid for those, we were saving money, but they were getting paid for them. They're no longer going to get paid for those. So you're talking about significant amounts of money. Now, I've asked them that question about, do you make money?
I bet you have.
I've asked them, because I, again, I asked them that, I've asked them that years ago. I think what you have to remember is there's a whole capital asset process that takes place at a corporate level for them. They get to depreciate these buses, they get to refinance, they get to play with the asset amounts. They depreciate a bus down, they get those tax savings. But then they still get to use that bus, so they can still profit off of that bus. Then they can sell the bus. So there's a whole nother aspect, where a contract like ours is more about cash flow. It's more about, is there cash flow to maintain these assets and have employees and maintain a corporate initiative that has multiple revenue streams and multiple ways of making money? So it's a, it's a bigger industry than just, oh, are you, here, we're getting on the bus, and we're taking kids to and from school, and that kind of thing. Do they make money? Sure, sure, they make money. But similar to food service contracts in schools, it's, it's not significantly profitable, because it just can't be, it won't be.
Well, and I think they enjoy and appreciate having a footprint here, because everyone else is first student. If you look at Sterling, and you look at Rock Falls, or they're, or districts on their own buses. And having a footprint in northwest Illinois helps them. And we receive calls from time to time, and a lot of times even at the superintendent's or the board conference in November. They'll have districts who are considering them, or they're bidding for that, talk to us about what it is. So it's also helpful for them to have, we are not a large district, but we're also not a tiny district. And there are many similar to ours throughout the state, and even in Wisconsin where they're at. And I think they appreciate being able to prove they can handle a larger district.
How, how long have we contracted with them?
Oh, decades, 20 years?
Yeah, so it'd be quite a blow to lose us.
I think they took over, yeah, 20 years ago.
And where, where's the home base?
Well, their parent company is North American Transportation Bus, or something like that. And Illinois Central is a division of that. Their Illinois headquarters is in Joliet.
Thanks, thank you.
So big picture there, if we look at that, $700,000 a year, that's kind of the deficit that we're running this year.
Just I wonder.
We, we balance the transportation budget starting next year through this process.
Wow.
And over the six years, we ultimately save $4 million. With declining state revenues and state funding, this makes a significant difference for us.
When you came with the transportation problem last month, I didn't think you'd have it solved.
So the pressure you applied, yeah, or the negotiation that-
Why can't we fight persuasively? No. Just one last final comment on the business report. For the first time this year, or first time since the inception of the program, county facility sales tax breached $200,000. So what we received in December. Now, of course, December being the holiday month is traditionally one of the, one of the largest. However, I will not underestimate the fact that the dispensary opened on the 21st of December. So we will be watching that closely. Other than that, I'm happy to take any more.
One thing I noticed, the insurance claims were super low in February.
So those aren't the insurance claims. So remember, now that we are fully insured, the way the information is presented to us is no longer on a, on a claim basis. The claims that you see there are claims that were paid this month that occurred before December 31st. Our new insurance, because we are fully insured, is simply the premium rate versus the number of people we have on the plan, based on their tier-three, single-tier-three family, whatever it is that they have. So it is a fixed number, based on the number of people. And we won't receive claim data the way we've received it in the past.
So that won't appear in the business report?
So you won't, you won't see that. Now, if you look at that graph closely, they owe us $640,000. So we'll be watching that number to see if there's any more claims that get processed against it. Remember, for the most part, all claims are processed within 30, within 90 days, three months. Well, that data is as of the end of March, okay? So we've kind of hit that timeframe. So that number, while they won't disperse it to us yet, it is ours.
You get half a million, kind of.
You know, over time, it might be a little more. Might, they might, you know, there might be a few more claims that roll through, but ultimately, that money is ours.
And they're going to cut us a check for that at some point?
They will, probably after 12 months, they said. It would probably take an entire 12-month time period. But yes, that number is ours. So I'll be tracking that and monitoring it. And go ahead from there?
Okay. That's it.
Thank you, Mark. Next on the agenda is the CEP, Community Eligibility Provision. This has been a topic of late regarding lunch, lunch balances. So Mark has been working with the numbers and the formulas from the state to find out, and we have that information to present.
Yeah, so in your packet, CEP means Community Eligibility Provision. And basically, it is an avenue within the law that allows a school district to provide free breakfast and free lunch to all students, regardless of their income, regardless of anything. To do that, there is a process. In that process, you have to first identify your eligible students. Keep in mind, that is not your free and reduced population. It is a population of students that are identified with, with other parameters. For example, being migratory students, homeless, identified as like TANF or SNAP-type benefits within the families. Based upon those numbers, you then, you get certain reimbursements based upon what your percentage is. Our percentage is about 45%. If we were 62%, basically, we would be receiving 100% of the reimbursement revenue. Since we're only about 45%, there's this calculation factor, and certain number of percentage of kids would be, they would get reimbursed at a certain rate, and a certain number of kids would get reimbursed at a lower rate. And in the end, when you put all these numbers together, and on the second page of that document, there's a spreadsheet. I didn't make that spreadsheet, the state of Illinois provides that to you as a test mechanism. If we were to implement CEP next year as an estimate, it would cost the district about $130,000. Because of that, keep in mind, CEP is a four-year election. So you would be saying to yourself, we are at a minimum going to pay $130,000 a year for the next four years, regardless of what happens. Some of our concerns lie, first of all, in is that is an unfunded expense that we would be taking on. It's not very close to break even. If it was closer to break even, we might be more inclined to make the recommendation. In addition to that, with the uncertainty in the USDA, uncertainty with federal funding and the National School Lunch Program, it is really difficult for us to recommend at this time to enter into those, enter into a four-year agreement when it's so unpredictable right now. So our recommendation, basically, tonight is just an information item. Our recommendation is that we're not going to make the recommendation to enter into CEP going forward. We will do the evaluation as we've done it this year. We will do it every year and continue to monitor. At some point in time, we may find that it is more of a break even and is more appropriate for us. Be happy to answer any questions.
And if we choose not to do this, the status quo prevails?
Yes, and we're not asking that you choose anything. Unless if there was a discussion here tonight that made us think you wanted us to implement that. But we go status quo, which is, if you are, keep in mind, if you are a family, if you are a student, you are never denied a breakfast, you are never denied a lunch. Contrary to sometimes what you hear in the community, is untrue, you are never denied. It doesn't matter how much you owe us, you still get one. Does not matter. If you are a family that cannot afford it, there is a form for free and reduced. There is a form for your fees to get waived. We would recommend, step one is, fill out the form. When you fill out the form, if you were to qualify, we would actually wipe your debt. More than likely, you'll find that you qualify for reduced, if not free. And in that scenario, your charge would be lower on a daily basis when you get your lunch, or breakfast, or milk, whatever it is.
Our secretaries do an amazing job of reaching out and connecting with families to let them know what opportunities are out there for families, if it's a temporary struggle, if it's a permanent struggle. And it would work very closely with families to try to figure out what is the best way for them to go.
On the other hand, with CEP, does that, would that effectively mean free lunch for everybody? But the, but basically, the district would be footing the bill?
The district would foot the bill.
At a rate of $130,000? $130,000.
And that's free lunch even if there are kids then who don't?
Doesn't matter.
That's not-
They'll bring their own lunch, or they'll, whatever.
Open campus?
Yeah.
You know, you wonder how many-
It's based upon, it's based upon the number of meals you serve. So that spreadsheet also takes into account a increase in meals. You can, you can put in some increasers and stuff. And it's, it's a pretty significant increase to get us to break even. I mean, it's over 20% in breakfast and 20% in lunch to get us to a break-even point. So I don't think that you could argue, well, it's free, we're going to give more. I don't, I don't know if that, that would really balance out.
Do you, when you, when you kind of do the math and figure considerations, there is some administrative overhead in, secretaries have a new call and contact and figure out applications for free and reduced, and do you qualify for this or that? There's a certain number of men- There's a certain number of man-hours that are going there. It's probably not $130,000 worth of man-hours.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, from a cost accounting perspective, it does cost us money. And if you take that secretary sitting there an hour a week or two hour a week, or like in Rachel Little's case where she's processing a lot of these at the start of the year, you know, it could be, you know, hours, days. But yeah, it's not $130,000. So, no, I'm not taking that into consideration. Nor do I think we would really want to. As that money is already leaving because those people are getting paid anyway. And the $130,000 is just the cost of the meals. So, like, we would get a bill from Winstons that we would have to pay $130,000.
For me, there's a lot of valium simplicity. And it's from a lot of people's perspective, it's easier just to have free lunch and do it and forget about it. And $130,000 is not chump change, so... Probably somewhere in the middle is where I... If it does make sense in the future, and I like hearing you say you're going to keep an eye on it and see how it looks.
Right, I do too. So, you're saying if that 45% or whatever ours is changes, it might...
Sure, I think there's a number there that you would want to consider. I don't know what that number is, but there's a number there you'd want to consider. I would tell you that 130 is not a number I would want to have to go and search for within our budget.
No.
That's not one.
Curious what the number will be next year.
Moving on to number three. We sent out information after we finalized the DEA contract and sent out information to our parents and families about the fact that we are getting back 30 minutes to the end of the day. I know our middle school students of the month don't like that. But in talking for as long as I can remember with our teachers and that, they need for more time for instruction has been a priority. So, one of the things that I asked, the building principals have been meeting with either their facilitators, their building leadership teams, or their staff as a whole in taking a look at the schedule. And as they're starting to get these finalized, since we're coming to the end of the year, I asked them to provide you a schedule of what they have right now. So, you will see the high school. The focus during negotiations was the fact that it was to be put on academic time. We weren't going to extend recesses, and we weren't going to extend things like that. So, what you have in front of you are schedules for next year from the high school to the middle school and the elementaries. And so, wanted an opportunity for you to look at this, see if there's any questions that I need to take back to the principals or maybe something that I can answer. And we're getting this information out ahead of time. And I know it's been especially important with kindergarten registration coming up and preschool screenings for those going from pre-K to K. So, you have it, so you can see where we've added time on to the instructional day. And I have principals here tonight. Is there anything specific? Anybody wants to add to that?
You know, pretty self-explanatory it is. Can I just add that we're really excited to be able to have this extra 30 minutes, especially for third grade, because the new addition to their actual amplified curriculum is giving them the skills piece that they don't have this year. Huge piece for our third grade teachers to be able to teach skills like second teacher's skills, because right now they have to shove it into the 120 minutes they only have. This really helps us to build up extra 15 minutes for skills a couple of times a week and then writing as another piece because we have to shove it into the ELA. So, this gave us an extra time along with doing our morning meeting, which goes along with our consciousness of what we're adopting. So, both of those together is really big for Jefferson. And all the teachers are so appreciative of that we were able to decide how we spent it because we wanted to do what was best for our kids. So, thank you for that.
So, a comment I've heard about the 30 minutes is, well, we've got eight periods and 30 minutes, that's like two or three more minutes per period. Our schools and periods being at, of course, Reagan and the high school. Is that how the high school and Reagan are implementing those 30 minutes or...Matt?
For middle school, we're focusing on our core, four core in our homeroom, win, academics, support time. So, we took the 30 minutes and so we had five minutes to our core math, ELA, science, social studies, and added 10 minutes to our win, academics, support time. So, you know, while it doesn't seem like a lot each day, you know, that's 25 minutes a week, 100 minutes a month. You know, you add it up over the course of a year, that's almost 14 additional lessons that these kids are going to have in our core subjects. So, we've been needing it for a long time, and I think we'll use that time wisely.
And the high school, we're essentially doing the same thing. We're adding it into our periods. We, and Jared kind of included some that's going to equate for us about four and a half additional hours of instruction this semester, which then will also equate to six extra instructional days per semester. And at the high school, we're kind of more unique with the driver's ed component. We have to have seat minutes. So, that kind of builds in some additional time. We have kids sometimes that come, they're sick. And they technically really shouldn't be there, but they're coming because they want to stay in the line. Driver's ed. So, that kind of gives us a little bit more leeway working with them. And then additionally, like Reagan's, we added some time into our intervention period at the end of the day that we're moving out to the end of the day so that we can get a core set time that's not really kind of... Right now, we have a 30-minute advisory or ELT period. So, by the time the kids sit down, they get their things prepared, you know, you're eating into that 30 minutes. But now, by kind of padding it a little bit, we kind of accommodate for those times. So, we have a true like 30-minute time that they're actually engaging in intervention activity.
Thank you for that.
Finally, I wanted to have a discussion with you. I know that we've talked about a variety of things and programming for kids. What a lot of people don't realize is that this time of the year, when myself and Lee County Special Ed Director Karina Steinmeier, we sit down and we start talking about what is next year going to look like. As kids move into our district, as IEPs change, as the needs of children change, we have to start looking to say, "What are the things that we have? What are the things that need to be added in order to make sure that we get, meet our kids' needs?" And so, we are adding three areas of programming for next year. They happen to all be at Washington at this time. We continue to look. And I put those down. We're adding a transition kindergarten. We're looking, we, sometimes people call it junior kindergarten. But we have students sometimes, as we heard from our teachers this year, and we have seen as we've gotten to know students that need a little bit more time for maturity, to develop skills, to learn how to essentially do school. And to take a look at this, Mrs. Glenn has been pulling information from around the areas of different junior kindergartens. I have also been pulling information. We haven't fine-tuned all of the requirements yet because as you're looking throughout, every single one is different. There are some that they go all day. They institute almost like a nap like we used to see in the kindergartens because they need that developmentally. There are some that go just half-days. And, you know, the most important thing, as Kelly and I were even just talking this week, is it's going to be important for parents to know that most of the students, if they're in a junior kindergarten, will actually do two years of kindergarten. It gives them that extra time to develop, to mature, to get certain skills under their belt. And really, in talking with superintendents and teachers who have junior kindergarteners, what they find is a lot of these kids then will usually have a stronger skill set and just flourish once they get to full-time kindergarten. There are some that they just maybe needed an extra month in some of their development. And it's important that we remember we have to look at each kid individually and figure out what is the best programming for them. One of the things we're looking at now is, do we start them with a half-day to begin? And then perhaps in second semester, move to a whole day. There's a variety we have to look at, like I said. That will be finalized in the upcoming weeks so we can start to identify the kids through testing. That's another thing. It isn't just, "I feel like this kid needs to go in." We have to have data to know because we want to make sure if somebody's going to do two years of kindergarten, that we have the data that supports that and it is best for them. So, we're going to be looking at the kindergarten testing that occurs. They speak with parents on what are you seeing at home? And so, we're going to finalize all of those pieces in the next couple of weeks so we can bring that information back to you. Secondly, Mrs. Steinmeier talked to me about some of our kids' functional communications and early foundations and developing classrooms for this. Some of the kids in the functional communication we find have autism and need extra attention placed on communication strategies, instruction by visuals. And one of the things that we've heard both from teachers and from parents is, "How do we limit the amount of transitions these kids have?" And so, in discussions with teachers and administrators, we started talking about the fact that we can do a functional communication class. It's essentially what Jordan Miller is teaching right now at Washington. But we're going to make that K2. So, kids can be there kindergarten through second. And then, when they're ready to move on in third, we can do grades three through five and have only one transition instead of one to Jefferson, one to Madison. And then, of course, six through eights at the middle school. So, we're excited about the fact that they'll have one less transition during their years. And then, Mrs. Folgers, is an early foundation. Looking more of an academic focus for these kids, the communication strategies are there. And working with kids at their skill level and working on independence skills and life skills. And again, these kids will make one less transition because we can open up the classroom to K2. So, we're very excited about this. We feel that we're meeting the needs of our students and we're looking at programming, and this is something we do every spring. Not every spring brings us this opportunity, but I think we learned early on the need to look at other ways to service our students. So, questions on that?
Are you thinking one junior kindergarten question?
Yes. When we looked this year between those that qualified to be out, did some programming and saw differences within the classrooms, and those, we felt that one classroom at this time. Also, taking a look at pre-K coming in. Now, there are kids out there that weren't in our pre-K, aren't going to get caught with some of the local daycare screenings. We'll look at the numbers again after they're done registering students. I really encourage our parents to go to the registrations and preschool screenings and all of the things that need to be done so we can get some concrete numbers. And if we have to move to a second classroom, we can do that.
And you would, I guess, it would be phrased as a recommendation to the parents that their child do a junior kindergarten, but they would have the option to say?
Correct.
No, I want...
It cannot be forced upon a parent. Kindergarten is an emotional grade. But we want to be able to meet with the parents, explain to them the rigors and the expectations of kindergarten, why we feel their child could use this extra boost, what it could mean for them. So, they understand why we're recommending it. And ultimately, what we believe will be a bonus for that student.
So, a lot of these assessments are going on right now?
Correct.
Within some of the daycares and preschools? For these kindergartners coming in next fall?
Correct. And we do a screening with our local daycare. So, we, it's, I think, coming up in the next week or two actually, where we work with them, with the ROEs, with local daycare centers, and we do large screenings so we can get as many kids as possible.
And somebody who has a child not in daycare or preschool, is there like a kindergarten roundup?
Yes.
And that's coming up?
Yes, they've held one already, and we've got one more coming up. And then, of course, we see parents coming in all summer long up until, you know, through like the middle of June, starting again at registration. The quicker we can get them in and get an idea of what it is, the better. So, we'll be, you know, continuing to push that out.
So, those are advertised?
Yes, they're on our website. There's one right now up on the Lovett billboard in Dixon. On all of our social media pages, they send the information out, so...
And would you talk for a minute about, even though a child is assessed that they're ready for kindergarten, the difference between them being in school for two and a half hours in a daycare program or preschool program and next year a seven-hour day?
Yes.
I mean, sometimes we miss a child because of that. They might seem like they're ready, but they can't handle seven hours?
Exactly. And if you think about it, this year was six and a half hours. And we're adding another half an hour, which I appreciate you recognizing, seven hours. Yes, exactly. Some of the discussions that went on this year were the facts that we didn't see certain behaviors or certain needs when they were in pre-K. That's a two and a half hour program. And then they leave and they go home. We're asking them to come for seven hours in a day. And that is a huge increase for kiddos on top of just navigating the school, the amount of kids, you know. It's a bright, cheery place at Washington, and it can be overwhelming for some. So, this is, you know, a way that we can hopefully maybe bridge that. And that's why Mrs. Glenn and Mrs. Bus and I are looking at that like, "What is that sweet spot? Is it trying to start, you know, it's just going to be half-days all year?" But I think one thing we're talking about is the benefit of, at some point, transitioning to a fuller day, giving some more maturity time, giving some more growth time, and then starting them in on that. Now, the great part is, you know, we could look at, you know, if somebody just truly wasn't ready, you know, we could structure the day where most things are in the morning so then in the afternoon, it's a little lighter and they're not missing any key academic skills. But we just got to look. And that is, it's a huge thing. And a lot of times, and again, depending on how they've structured their day in pre-K or at home or with babysitters, you know, I say, "There's just time. Not every kid develops at the same rate, and that is okay." You know, some kids just need longer. We see it all throughout our lives, needing extra time to learn things. And we want to create, we try to create a program that meets their needs.
So, they, so some of those problems might not be seen until the beginning of the school year?
Correct.
Is what I'm trying to say too. I mean, we do our best to assess in the spring or summer or whenever we see these kids. But if, again, they can't handle seven hours, that wouldn't show up until they're doing seven hours.
Correct.
And so, sometimes that programming then takes a little time once school starts.
We've done surveys too with our teachers on things that they feel would help and how do we start the beginning of the school year on a more positive note. You know, one of the things they've talked about is a longer boot camp before academics start. We think that's a great idea, something kind of previewing that I'm going to talk to them about. But yes, it's needed.
I think that came up during contract negotiations too.
It did as well, yes. And, you know, you look at it and you try to figure out what we need, and that's going to meet the majority of our kids.
I worked in a district once where they did a transitional first grade. So, these are kids who maybe struggled a bit in kindergarten and weren't quite ready for first grade. I like the idea of helping them be successful in when they start kindergarten and then moving on every year or two.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like this idea better.
We're excited, and like I said, we're hoping to put final touches on. I will bring that back information to the board as well. Because, yeah, I think we've got like two weeks before the next kindergarten screening. And then, we want to be able to start letting parents know as we identify because it will be important to... Because it will be important to sit down with the parents, explain what it is, why it'll be beneficial. And if your child gets in there and takes off and just flies, then we can move them out into another room.
I think that's an important thing to?
Yes.
Let them know that they will be assessed again. And?
Right. And then any other committee reports from the board?
Well, PRC, Professional Relations Committee of DEA Matt. And we continued and finished going over the Staff General Information Bulletin, which contains all the employee policies. We go through that every year and look at each one individually to see whether there are changes or amendments to that. Rules, rules for staff members, basically that is. There was no concerns at Washington. They know that, just like we just discussed, programming is being talked about for next year based on the needs of the students that we know about at this time. So they're pleased with that. At Jefferson, they were doing state testing. And there was talk about consistency of appreciation days for staff members like para professionals in particular. So it's just good to talk about stuff like that, that everybody's treated equally, I guess. At Madison, they were doing Battle of the Books, which I saw got some press in the paper.
Their panels are tomorrow.
Oh.
I believe.
They are.
Yes.
And in terms of staff, both state testing was done. In terms of staff, they appreciated co-teaching professional development, really positive. There were positive responses about that, where a teacher and a para both are in the classroom working and going to some professional development so they can be most efficient and work together and learn to work together. Is that about right, Doug? Is that what that professional development does? I attended one when I was teaching and it really did help to have that para with me at the professional development. And then we got to talk about how we should work together, you know? You didn't spend your whole semester sort of flubbing around at it, trying to figure it out, you know? It was really, I thought the professional development was very helpful and so did these teachers. The district activity calendar came up again and there was talk about that, how the activities can be put on a shared calendar so that activities aren't overlapping. So that's something that is being worked on. And at the high school, they were doing, they were starting ACT state testing. Doug talked about studying SEL curriculum and seeing what is out there. There's probably always new things developing. The MTSS team training was going on and conscious discipline, professional development was happening. And those were all positive responses.
Community engagement met yesterday. We continue on our journey of the attendance project. We had a presentation from Softgala Media about potentially having an awareness campaign that would be launched through social media. Not really social media, but advertising on new digital things like ads would show up in Instagram, Facebook, Snapchat, or potentially audio ads even on Spotify or things like that. If we wanted to couple that with our way of raising awareness around the attendance issues. So that's an option we have, we're going to talk about again next month, potentially doing that towards the fall. We've also finalized the posters that we're going to get printed up, some for outside the buildings and some for just around the community and a whole bunch of places. And those will be going up. The plan is to put them up towards the beginning of the school year to hit it hard at the very beginning of the school year.
I think those things matter. I mean, you might think it's common sense or a simple solution, but sometimes, but sometimes simple is better. And for people to be sort of plastered with this information, I think is a good idea.
Yeah, we've all learned a ton. And the kind of the, all the information that we learned has been boiled down. Kaiman Usung helped us to build a page on the website to add in all of our kind of the highlights of the facts about, you know, all the things we've learned about there. So the idea is that the advertising will drive people to the place on the website where they can get more information, hear the science or whatever behind it. But just to get the word out in the community.
And anything that reinforces what parents want to do? I mean, parents want their kids to be in school, but have difficulty doing it sometimes. So any way that we can support them has got to help.
Bet.
We met, Curriculum Committee met on the 10th. Talked about new renaissance, EduClima onboarding 14 a couple of days ago. One thing I think that kind of hit and was really neat was the Pathways Program in education and nursing program. I think it was really neat that someone had an opportunity, that he went through the education program, had an opportunity to have an interview at DPS. Doesn't guarantee a position at DPS, but obviously it gets them to experience that interview experience and education. And then on the nursing side, getting them on the right path, you know, potentially be a nursing degree of some nature. And SOC has a great program with that as well, so good partnership with that. Another one too was that I wrote was the Second Step Program. Had conversation around that, some opportunities, I think the extended times next year will help potentially with that. Basically reducing confrontational events with some students. Conscious discipline, it was mentioned, Ms. Thornt mentioned that. Character building, the biggest concern was they didn't have time to have those conversations with other programs being effective. So mention about online version is better, some conversations around some opportunities there. One mentioned maybe having a different voice, for example, a social worker having a conversation, has better engagement with students versus the same person, a teacher having that conversation. So yeah, good meeting, so look forward to see what happens next year.
Is the nursing pathway something we are looking at? We don't have it yet.
We do not currently, we have Ed.
We actually now do have a nursing path, but we do have a student that will be graduating with that this semester.
Was that the one recognized?
Yes, he was recognized at this.
Can you give the, just another shout out, it was our first pathway graduate?
Colin Wright is our senior student that has graduated, will graduate with the endorsement in the health sciences. So he receives a couple of things from SOC essentially. So he'll have that endorsement on his diploma. For some places, kind of the point with pathways is for, in the community in the state of Illinois, if a student presents that I have a pathway endorsement, they know that there are certain criteria that is met. So for some of them, they go, they kind of jump in the application pool, they kind of come rise to the top. So that's kind of what we're looking at. We have a couple more that I'm working on, developing plans for agriculture is one and manufacturing is the other one that we're working on right now too.
Oh, that's awesome.
Nice.
Glad, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tate. Superintendents report, there's just two things. So April 1st was the election and four of you were reelected to your posts. I had to say, very excited. It's the first time in 10 years a superintendent has kept the same board. So it cuts down on the amount of training we do, not that I, that we mind doing it, but it's nice for continuity. So congratulations, Linda and Linda and Brandon and John. We're glad to have you back. So according to state code and law, they, the county clerk has 21 days after the election to get us the certified vote. And that's actually an action item that we have during the meeting. So we will have until the 22nd, they have until the 22nd of April to get that to us. And we actually have 45 days, correct? Forty?
Forty.
Forty. That just recently changed. We have 40 days then post-election to seat the board. So we're waiting, waiting just to see. I would like to keep this outside of the main meeting, if at all possible, because the main meeting is kind of a big one. We have our Employees of the Year and things like that. So as the school year is coming to an end and things are being announced. But if we can't get a common date, I believe that the 40 days will be okay at our meeting. We haven't done the official counting yet, but I'll check on it. There's really three things that are done and I've given you this. And we have to certify the vote of who is going on. We have to reelect officers of who wants to be president, vice president and secretary. And we need to confirm the next 12 months of board meeting dates. I already sent out board meeting dates to you because if you remember last month, Carmen Ayala said, we need to know when board meeting dates are to schedule certain benchmarks for the new superintendent interviews. So I kind of sent that out early and I haven't heard back from anyone that anything's a conflict right now. So please, if you haven't had a chance to look at it, just let me know in the next week. Because as soon as we get the information, which I anticipate will be right after our Easter Monday, I will be reaching out to everybody to try to get a date.
So a date probably between April 22nd and the May meeting.
Correct.
Some, and?
Most likely first week in May.
Does it have to be 40 days from April 1st?
Before 40 days.
What's that?
Within the?
Within the 40 days.
Yes, well, we can't wait till the May meeting then. Well, April is 30 days, we're not having the meeting May 10.
Yeah, it'd have to be before May 10.
Yeah, so the first week in May is what we're looking at.
Oh, I thought it was 40 days from April 22nd election. Oh, 40 days from the election.
From the election, yes.
Right.
Yeah.
So, but it shouldn't be a long meeting, Marko thinks?
No, usually seating is, it's a longer meeting if we have new people. Because I used to do some training and different things and we used to get people set up with their passwords and logins. But we all have them established.
They have to leave when the new people are seated.
Yes. And so we still have to adjourn signing dahi as they recommend. And I temporarily just take over till the president's elected and then I give it back.
Do we have to take the oath again?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, so we'll get all of those, those things worked out. I gave Erin all the training information and it's a very prescriptive agenda. So really, I believe 30 minutes or less for a meeting.
I remember you doing an awful lot of whining because Kathleen and I had seven people running for three spots. You're laughing, what? You should be all happy. I voted for all the board. Really? Absolutely.
Very happy, first time.
You were the first one whining.
I'm not doing any whining, like I said, because it's just great having folks back. So just to let you know, we'll be looking in that first week. So I will most likely reach out to you next week. I'll say, hey, check your email, let's try to get a date. Finally, believe it or not, we have 11 FOIA requests since our last board meeting. Right now, this is something we also talked to Representative Fritz about this week at our lunch. Right now, we have companies that are doing AI-generated FOIA requests. And 10 of the 11 were AI-generated. We received another one yesterday that was AI-generated from yet a different company. So when all of these came about immediately, you know, superintendents are kind of like, what's going on? We all touched base with council. Yes, they're legitimate, even though AI, you have to respond to them. And we have been in compliance with all of them. So the ACB, as you see there, was the one who submitted tech requests, excuse me, related to annual expenses paid to vendors, firms or individuals from 1999 to 2024. We have been, we're in compliance with that. The great part is, you know, now that everything is electronic, you see that when you get your board packets. You know, Mark basically just goes, downloads it, uploads it, sends it and out it goes. And there were a couple of years we didn't, because we didn't have electronic records at that point and they're only required to be retained for a period of time. So you just respond, we do not have that. So we're in compliance, but one of the things we talked about yesterday with Representative Fritz is they are looking at how to handle, this was, FOIA was never meant to be, you know, in this manner. It was to be a transparent, open communication. And now, like I said, every school district in the state received those AI-generated. So they're looking at it now, kind of going, how do we handle this? It's a new realm.
And besides just the extra work and man-hours, you, didn't you, did you already hit on this? That you're afraid that they are able to get in the system?
My concern, when you hear of all the hackings that go around, was that it was possible that this could be, that's what all of us thought immediately was since everybody's getting them, is there some sort of hacking? Is it trying to find out different ways into our system? And different things put into the specific request, kind of threw up a red flag list, which is why we got it all checked out. And it's nothing that we can't, like I said, give them or have issues. You see them in our board packets every month, but just of a luminous amount of material. We also have one from David Arvale, the Painters District Council number 30. They've done one in the past as well, I believe, when we were opening Thomas Demse. And they were asking for then all of our school district, any improvements to buildings that have happened since January 1st, 2025. So we have complied with all of these requests, but it's been very interesting.
Yeah. All part, how long does it take you to take man-hours of time to fulfill one request on average? There's probably huge ones and tiny ones and?
Depends on the request, yes.
First one of our AI-generated was, we asked for, you have five days to respond in a FOIA request. We asked for the five-day extension and everybody did because we had to wrap our minds around what they were asking for and, you know, is this legitimate?
Yeah, I mean, and some requests, like, for example, if they want to see invoices. Well, we are required to keep invoices, accounts payable invoices for seven years. So they could reasonably request those and they're not electronic. We would have to go down here to the archive, pull that box down, go to the vendor, pull those out, make a copy or scan it or whatever it looks like. And I mean, if they were to ask for, let's just use an example, give us the, give us your food service invoice for October, every year for the last seven years. We would have to do that. We would have to pull down seven different boxes and pull down the invoice and walk over to the copier and make it, scan it and, and again, that could take us a couple of hours to kind of do that. Sometimes this one that she mentioned came from another AI. They were requesting our transportation contract. Well, we have that electronically, here you go. And you just send it on, right?
Five minutes to five hours?
Yeah, I mean, it could take a long time.
Five hours.
Yeah. Several days working on it on and off.
Okay, five minutes to 15 hours or so.
Because again, depending on what they request, some of the stuff we have to look very closely at. We detect anything that could be certain identifiable information that is protected, so.
So we still got a lot of paper records of a lot of that stuff? Have we talked, ever talked about electronic records and storing that stuff electronically instead of?
We have it. We have the ability to laser fish, you know, things. Again, it's people and time.
And some of those items, it's not worth it. We have to keep them, like a seven-year invoice, it's not worth our time to go and scan it. Put it in a couple of boxes seven years later. It's not, it's not worth that time and effort to scan. It's not, it's not worth that time and effort to scan each and every one of those. We don't get any value out of being able to search for them electronically, but we use laser fish quite a bit with student records.
Because you have to keep those for 70 years.
Those you gotta keep long.
Seventy, seventy, wow.
So that's, that's where we put our efforts in.
Yeah, I think there's firms that'll, that'll take a box of records, scan them all in, and now you've got them digitally, and they can do that.
I don't want to pay for that.
Well, and you know, we, we realize, community service workers use a, a lot of, this is such confidential information that.
No, you can't.
You can't. Is there any need to go into executive session for personnel? If not, we can do that now, open session, and then there will be no action coming out of executive session.
I will read the personnel page and then ask for a motion and a second. New hires, Adam Gerber, fourth grade special ed, resource teacher at Madison. All the following are effective for 25, 26 school year. Grace Klein, AG teacher and FFA advisor at Dixon High School. Cameron Yater, driver's ed, physical education teacher at Dixon High School. Carter Schlegel, third grade teacher at Jefferson School. Julia Powers, lunchroom attendant at Madison School, effective May 1st, 2025. Resignations, Amanda Spahn, principal secretary at DHS. Again, effective following 24, 25 school year. Erin Rogers, choir teacher at DHS. Brittany Bartlow, K first grade teacher at Dempsey Day School. Dee Leahy, para professional at DHS, effective at the end of this school year. 24, 25 Dixon High School coaches and activities. Brad Winterlin, spring head strength coach. Zach Heinz, spring assistant strength coach. Nadia Warchowski, accompanis, two stipends. Heidi Spotts, Nantley, Man, Manthe, accompanis, one stipend. 24, 25 coaching activities, resignations. Leslie Butler, DHS softball, effective March 19, 2025. John Emman, DHS football, effective immediately. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And roll call.
Mr. Wadsworth.
Aye.
Mr. Pr.
Aye.
Mrs. Shaffer.
Aye.
Mrs. Ballpark.
Aye.
Mr. Rogers.
Aye.
Mrs. Wagner.
I need a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of discussing the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline for performance or dismissal of specific employees, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee to determine its validity, the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the public body, including meetings held for the purpose of discussing whether a particular parcel should be acquired, and student disciplinary cases. So moved.
Second.
The time?
Seven fifty-four.
Roll call.
Mr. Pritz.
Aye.
Mrs. Ballpark.
Aye.
Mr. Shaffer.
Aye.
Mr. Wadsworth.
Aye.
Mr. Rogers.
Aye.
Mrs. Wagner.
Aye.
Do just a few minutes.